Here it will feel like the rest of downtown here. Once it's all, all completed.
So Troy, go ahead.
Go, if you had a question, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say that the one piece of very valuable info that you've given us so far, the parking lot next to Firestone, I didn't know it was as decrepit as it is.
Oh yeah.
And we're basically gonna lose half the spaces anyhow. We've changed the equation, obviously, with the other parking lot. There used to be a lot of downtown workers that would park there, walk across the street, go to work, but now they park behind.
Yes.
US Bank or whatever and walk through the nice alley that we made, which would be much safer anyhow, so.
Right. And there, and you know, Firestone is the one that mainly uses this parking lot for customers, but this is all of theirs right here. We can, I calculate, well, they can get twenty-six cars parked back here. And I believe there will be a connection sidewalk along here so that, you know, customers could park back here and still walk in the front door without having to walk through the whole building here. So the developers talked with the owner of the building. They, they're not having any issues with losing this parking right here because they have all of this back here, so.
So did I understand you right? I, I totally get the street thing, that makes a ton of sense, I like that a lot. They're involved with paying for that, that's not on us?
The street will be entirely done by the developer of Ascend Two. So that is part of the deal here is. We're, if we, we structured this very similarly to Ascend One. We got land, they did some public improvements with Vine Street. We gave them a twenty-five-year TIF. We got compensated for the land, this is the same deal. It's a twenty-five-year TIF. They're putting in public infrastructure on finishing Vine. There's more public infrastructure to do on this one. They're doing that whole stretch of about five hundred feet of new street with parking on both sides. And we're selling them the parking lot for the hundred thousand dollars. So it's structured very similarly to the first one.
I know we don't write the rules about TIF and we've been through this for nine years. You've been trying to teach me how all that works. Probably more than that for Nate, but. The twenty-five is the rate that's applicable to housing, is that accurate or about?
You can only do a twenty-five-year TIF if it's a redevelopment project or a housing TIF.
Right.
Our normal economic development TIF, which is what we have done now with industrial park, go up to nine years, that's the max. And, and realize that when, this is just, we do an estimate of what the increment will be generated from this project based on an estimated assessed value. If the taxes come in at a higher rate than what we have estimated, we cap the TIF at the dollar amount of that estimated twenty-five years. So if it comes in at a faster rate, then we decertify it sooner. It doesn't go twenty-five years, it could go a few years less than that. If it does not generate as much TIF as we have estimated here, then they just lose it. They don't get it. So they get as much as the twenty-five years up to the cap that we establish in the TIF plan of the maximum amount, what we estimate it's gonna be. And if more is generated, you don't get that more, we get that more. So maybe it's not certified early.
Don says he understands what we're doing.
Okay.
Yes, Dan.
Hi, there's a lot of underground work to the utilities, will you be doing around that time?
There's actually not a lot of underground work. Public utilities might end up doing some stuff in here. Most of all of this will be fed from, well, other than their utilities will come from there. I'm not sure OPU, so what we don't have yet is all the construction drawings yet. And one thing OPU will do is they're gonna take down all the overhead wires and run them along the river. That's all coming down, that's all gonna be buried underground, which was an important piece of this project. And so the developer wanted it out of the way, we want it out of the way because it beautifies that roof front a lot more. So that is something that they are committed to doing. They'll have to look at their utilities underground and see if there's anything where it makes sense to upgrade while this is all being done. And they're very good off, you know, being very efficient if it's already gonna be all ripped up and it's borderline, probably they're gonna do it. So we don't have that information here from OPU on what they wanna do with that yet.
Troy, what's the timeline for starting this property?
Uh, they would be looking at starting this in the spring demolition and go right into, into construction. So the, the plan would be, again, if council's on board, it would be to run through the approvals that are needed, or will be needed, you know, the, all the TIF approvals. They will be replating the whole property. And there will be a, a variance request for parking. So I think they have, there'll probably be about ten, ten private parking spaces short. But they're adding all of the public parking along that new roadway here. And they're redoing it all, that that would be a request that they're gonna ask for, which we felt like made sense. They're gonna be adding all that public parking and building it all new along the roadway here. And honestly, we only want enough parking there that's gonna be used, we don't want access parking. So I think that'll be a good trade-off.
How many units are you looking at for the space?
So the project will consist of a little over seventeen thousand square feet of commercial space in fifty-seven parking units.
And how many does the current one have?
The current one, I think they, they had about thirty thousand square feet of commercial space and about sixty-nine parking spaces, or sixty-nine parks.
Do you have to know the, do you have to know the occupancy rate?
I am, they are, if not entirely full, they probably only have a couple spaces left. You know, seven, seven left. Well, that's pretty good.
Will that be from the Ascend One to the Ascend Two? Ascend Two goes south, will that be public street then that we take care of? Will that be like Ascend One all private back there that they take care of?
No, that roadway would be public, cause Vine Street would be a public road. Ring Off Lane would be a public road, you know, connect into Bridge Street. So what we'll end up adding is, you know, those public roadways. Everything else will be private. All the parking outside what's on the street will all be private. So.
It'll be a way better configuration when it's just straightened out and cleaned up.
Yeah, we, we clean up a lot of stuff with this, with this project. There's a lot of issues down there, you know.
Well, that was great, thank you for bringing that to us. I think, anybody, any other questions?
Can I just comment that these projects aren't easy to put together. You can see all the different parcels of land down there and Troy's worked his tail off with not only Ascend One, but then to get this one to happen. So a lot has to happen here and he does a lot of work behind the scenes. And so I'm just trying to give you guys an update on kind of where we're at and what might be on your agenda, upcoming on your agenda scale. If you have questions for Troy, you may not have answers to them, but we're happy to take those back with them to find out any answers.
Yes, if anyone has any questions after today, just let me know.
Just an information session.
Yeah, no, that's great, we appreciate that. I believe our next topic is going to be HRA, is that correct?
EDA, actually.
Oh, EDA, okay.
Alright, so, and I think this came up in kind of some of our budget discussions here about the EDA and the HRA. We, in the proposed budget for 2026, we do have increases in both, probably a little bit more than you've seen before. EDA from two hundred thousand dollar levy amount last year to two hundred and forty thousand this year. And really, there's, there's not, we're not doing anything really different than before. Most of all, the budget is, is very similar to what it was before. And I just wanna point out.
That's Troy, excuse me. Was EDA and HRA was together about two hundred and forty thousand dollars asked?
No, two hundred and forty thousand for the EDA and two hundred and thirty thousand for the, the HRA. So EDA would be going up about forty thousand and the HRA about thirty thousand. And if I can find how I can get to more contents. So really, the difference here, I mean, everything is the same. So we, we, at the EDA, we contract out for a lot of what we do. We do not just have staff and expect, hire more staff and expect us to know and do everything. So we contract out a lot of our services. So our lodging tax, we collect the lodging tax, we've got a contract with the Chamber to do tourism. We've got a contract with the Chamber to do, to assist with economic development, recruiting and do the Main Street program. We contract with the Old Town Area Business Development Center to do loan administration. And we use consultants, Northland that helps us with our TIF consulting. So we don't look at, the EDA is just staff, we just need more and more staff because not any one of those things, well, tourism probably could be, but not any one of those things really constitutes having another full-time person. There's, there's expertise in different areas and so contracting out with parties that have that expertise is kind of the problem we've gone and we've done that. You know, I've been in this role for fourteen years and we've always done it that way. And I feel like we've been pretty successful at doing that and it helps keeps our, helps keeps our costs down. We, so the difference in that forty thousand, the, the line items are almost identical across the board with the exception of personnel costs. You know, and, and again, you saw that across the board on everyone's budget. Raises, you know, that goes up every year. So that went up about nine, ten thousand dollars there. And the other one, and still, this was new, is new for us, is this transfer to other funds, which was, what that is, is, you know, previously, Rhonda, when Rhonda was Finance Director, she would do all our TIF reporting. And she did it, we transferred twelve, twelve thousand dollars for that and it was done in-house. So, and that, that's probably a rarity that that's done in-house. And we had someone that was capable of doing it, so we took advantage of it and she did it. And so it did cost us a whole lot of money. That's probably not a long-range plan, plan for it, that we're gonna have someone that's able to do that because most other cities. And having an outside third-party consultant is probably more the appropriate way of doing that, so you've got another set of eyes looking at it from the outside. So although it saved us money, that's probably, it was never a very long-term plan for us. So at some point in time, you know, we were gonna have to contract out that. So we're on the left and when he comes in, we're, we're shifting some things. And this, this was the time it made sense to do that.
Yes, hi. What task was that, you?
The TIF reporting.
TIF districts, okay. And the other thing is, in fact, and I recognize the value of continuity, but when we are looking at consultants and that, do you go up a bit with these people at different times? Or we just use the same one year after year for continuity reasons?
Well, I mean, elders is new for us, since they're doing a lot of other financial advisement for us. It made sense for them to do that. We did actually price out, so Northland does our TIF consulting on an individual basis on our TIFs and they have the capability of doing TIF reporting. And we had gotten some numbers from them, which was very comparable to elders. And since elders was handling their financial advising, it made sense probably to stick with them. So they had a kind of a big picture of everything financially on that.
Are we not including our administrative fees through the TIF though?
We are, we can get to that. That was your question. So, so this is, so this is, so we've got about forty-four thousand dollars in TIF reporting costs. And if we go back up to... Oh, I got small screen here. So if we go back up here. To revenue. So we collect TIF administrative fees, sixty-two thousand dollars in TIF fees. And that, that is, what that's designed to do is to pay for administrative costs to have the TIF. So what was happening when Rhonda was doing it, you know, we were collecting, it hadn't always been sixty-two thousand, but a chunk of money, Rhonda was doing it in-house. So it saved us a bunch of money. And that was being, that was sort of subsidizing the EDA costs that we had. So now you take that, and you take those administrative fees and you apply them to the TIF reporting. So we have a gap now. And that's what this, this forty thousand dollars is to do. Their, their actual costs that we had in EDA, but they were sort of hidden because our revenues for administrative costs for TIF, we were bringing away more than we were spending. So we had that difference there. Now we don't have that difference anymore because now we have to pay the actual amount to do the TIF reporting. Therefore, we don't have that, that difference anymore. So this is sort of a catch-up too at all.
He's gonna ask the same question.
So are we collecting five percent or ten percent on our TIF districts?
Uh, we are collecting five percent.
So going forward, we could collect ten percent of the EDA commitment. That would give us more money than we've ever sold.
Well, you, we, we have to, so there's, I mean, the legislation is that you're, you're not collecting fees for the sake of.
Correct, but ten percent would give us more money to pay for our administration of TIF districts.
Well, we have sixty-two thousand already and we're spending forty-four. So we're already collecting more than what we're spending. We were just saving much more than that because we were only spending twelve thousand before. Now, the other piece of this is, so you think, okay, we're collecting sixty-two, but we're only spending forty-four, even with the TIF consultants, we're still collecting two thousand dollars more. The eighteen thousand dollars though is to help reimburse us for the initial upfront TIF consulting fees to develop the TIF district. So in here, we also have other professional services. This is, this thirty thousand dollars here is typically what we have set aside for establishing TIF districts or other sort of administrative things that we need done from a consultant, so.
Oh, we're, we're asking to utilize more levy dollars to cover those costs? We should be recouping those through TIF administrative fees. It's a justifiable increase in administrative fees, those aren't the cost of, huh? If we don't have enough money.
No, cause if I have to report where our TIF administrative fees are going, just like we do with building inspection, I've got sixty-two thousand dollars coming in and I've got forty-two thousand dollars going out. And the excess amount is to pay, over time, I've gotta pay about eight thousand dollars per TIF district. But it's a one-time expense, it's not an annual thing. And so that eighteen thousand dollars helps us pay for basically two TIF projects, which is basically what we do. So I would have a tough time, if I had to do any reporting on this, to say that we should get more TIF administrative fees off our TIF districts because we don't handle those expenses.
Kind of to Nate's question, does, I mean, we can apply it to something else that's related to EDA? Is that kind of what you're trying to, cause we, we're getting forty-eight, we're paying thirty-three, we have eighteen, you're looking at eight later on. You can't use some of that for other EDA fees rather than raising the levy on? Is that kind of what you're headed?
Well, we're, we're, we're asking for part of the levy increase to cover costs associated with administration reporting, which should be, that should be part of the TIF, levy should be necessary to cover it, right?
Right, and had we done that from the day one? This levy amount we already beat to forty.
Right.
And I'm, what I'm saying now is we need to get back to square. You see what I'm saying?
Well, it would be, it could be whatever, it could be zero. Cause you still should be recouping your administrative fees through the TIF. So a levy, why was, why does the levy matter?
Because the TIF, because we weren't doing that. The TIF administrative cost was going towards other EDA expenses.
Right.
Now we needed to go to actual pay for TIF reporting. So now my EDA levy, which was getting forty thousand dollars from TIF administrative fees, doesn't have that anymore to, to just operate what we were doing all along in EDA.
Some of that salary.
That salary, that's, that's everything on here, which we have changed very little at all. So, but before you get too far here, I've got another slide here. So we have always under, never taken the maximum EDA or HRA levy amount that we possibly could. Most cities do. So we just, this is just, this is not totally, we don't have all the information up there. We just, we have one of our staff, just go online and see what you could pull from other alt-state cities on what they use for their EDA and HRA levies. And we, that's not even the only one up there, just a second. Actually, I'll just leave that up there. I already knew this number right here.
You just have it memorized?
Yep. So this is what other cities just, so most cities will look at housing and economic development as two high, high priorities that we're gonna fund it to the maximum amount that we possibly can under state law because it's so important. And they will utilize those funds and try to do as much as they can with the maximum amount. We've never taken that approach. We have always, we have never funded EDA and HRA to the maximum amount. So the bottom line's there when it says maximum amount. We could, the maximum amount we could, we could levy for EDA is four hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars under state law. The HRA is five hundred and seven thousand dollars. That represents, I have this number two, which just represents forty-eight point one percent of what we could do. HRAs is forty-five percent. So we don't even levy, even with the increases that we're proposing this year, a forty thousand dollar increase in EDA and fifteen thousand HRA, we are still not even levying half as much as we possibly can. So if you look at Northfield, La Seca, Faribault, Morehead, you know, Marshall, Worthington, New Orleans, they're all doing a hundred percent, a maximum amount, a dollar amount will change because it's all predicated on, on the estimated taxable value of the city. And they do the same thing on the HRA too, a hundred percent. Cause everyone's screaming in every one of these communities, we need more housing, we need more housing, we need more economic development. Let's maximize the amount of resources that we possibly can have, so they do that. And again, we've stuck with a very strict plan of what we do on EDA, HRA. We only go up as minimal amount as we can. There are years that we have been at zero increases and you remember a lot of those.
Do you know what they're recouping for their administrative costs on this municipal community? Is it, are they all taking five percent or they do ten percent?
On their TIFs?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say five percent is pretty average. And so whatever they have coming in is expected to be paid out. Trying to answer a question.
Do we have an application fee for TIF?
We do not have an application fee for TIF.
Most cities have application fees, I would say like five thousand or ten thousand dollars. I think that's something we should look at, is establishing an application fee for TIF because there is cloud consensus to a city, to hire consultants, to review TIF plans, write proof documents, so.
All of which would be, all of which is.
Yeah, but we want to need to. So here's where I have like, like a theoretical or ideological question on this. So we are asking the taxpayers to pay more in the levy to fund businesses to expand and not have full tax liability for nine years. And they're not paying the other cost the, the rest of the community's paying. So we're already giving them a deal and now we're asking the citizens to pay even higher levy amount.
No, that's not right.
Okay.
It's not right.
Okay.
The TIFs, they are paying their way.
Okay.
In fact, not only were they paying their way, they were subsidizing other EDA activity to the tune of about forty thousand dollars previously.
Okay.
Because we were doing the TIF reporting in-house at a cheaper rate. An in-house rate probably not what you shouldn't have been paying for instead of consulting out like everybody else does and having that third party looking at it. So not only are, is TIF paying their way, but they were, for probably ten years now, have been subsidizing other EDA activities to the tune of about forty thousand. I mean, it's accumulated over time, but to the point today, it's forty thousand dollars. And what I'm saying this year is, let's, because we have to pay the actual amount now, is, we gotta, we gotta make up that forty thousand dollars that the EDA, that the TIF administrative fees were paying for. So they're, they're more than paying their way, they actually subsidizing the taxpayers' EDA activity. It was the other way around.
They're, yes, so they're subsidizing, subsidizing the EDA, which is an entirely optional thing. I mean, it's, that, that's a tough one for the community when they, when you see. I'm supportive of the EDA and I understand the polite TIF words, non-words. At first, we didn't have to do it, it'd be great if we had to do it. But we have to do it, that's the way the game is played. But in, in the citizen's eyes, they're also looking at it like, so we're subsidizing, we're subsidizing it, we're giving them a break on their taxes, we're also subsidizing it. I just wanna make sure we're maximizing any cost, any true costs that we have with the EDA. And it should be borne by any way that benefits people. And I'm worried that there's maybe situations where they maybe aren't going to. If you're telling me they paid in for so long and we got ahead, but now we gotta catch up. Well, we're still asking them to pay that difference then. We're still increasing that levy amount. And it's just now we're gonna reflect where the money actually is spent.
It is because the taxpayers, for the taxpayers to pay the true cost for EDA activity minus the TIF. It is because the taxpayers, for the taxpayers to pay the true cost for EDA activity minus the TIF. That's what we're asking for.
Right, because you have to ship the, the administrative cost, the true administrative cost that we're actually paying for money to get. Now the other things that we were paying for with that, we're asking to cover then.
Yes.
So it just, I don't think it looks great. Like, it's hard, it's hard, people have a hard time with TIF, or maybe, and then you're asking for an increase in the levy, but it's, it's because of this, and I get it, you're just having to spend the money you didn't spend before, but it's a tough, it's a tough thing to make clear. TIF's hard enough.
That's true.
TIF's hard enough, so that's my only concern. It, it seems like, but.
This, this becomes more transparent though to people. This is, this, the, if, if we were to do this, it becomes more clear that, oh, we got, this is not a TIF administrative, these are our TIF costs. Okay, that makes sense. We've got this levy coming in the years already, that makes sense. Like, they're, they're going to the things that's supposed to go to.
It, it seems like what we're, we're asking is, whatever you will, we ask every department head to recover as much cost as possible, whether it's parking rent or engineering or inspection, I would ask every department head to recover that as much as possible. But we have number two, um.
I got number two for you.
Okay.
One positive, I, I see.
I don't, I don't agree with her.
Go ahead.
We, we are still generating the single amount of tax that we are today, not generating the, the gains until twenty-five years.
Or whenever it runs out.
Well, the actual, the actual tax dollars, so, um, you know, there's a lot of other benefits to these TIF projects than the actual property tax we can take. And we get those immediately, right? And I'll even go back to, as we were doing the, the bond call and trying to keep our bond rating so we can get a better rate. A lot of that, uh, came to how much we're growing and how, uh, much economic activity we have. Well, a lot of those big projects are TIF projects. So, if you take that away and we lose, uh, uh, one step in our bond rating, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars more remaining for money. So there, I mean, that's just one example. The others, you know, all of the activity of all the people living in these projects, and all spending money in our businesses, uh, all the businesses that are there employing people, I mean, I could go on and on and on about these projects, so.
There's a limit to that though, I mean, it's, it's the same argument that's used for publicly financed sports games. Oh, we're gonna generate, realize all this amazing new revenue business, and then it never materialized, ah, damn, I don't know. So there's a limit to that, but I agree with you, like, it does provide opportunity, but that also highlights.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna over, overstate it, I, there, I mean, you all, we all understand what these projects are doing. It's, it's, let's look specifically at Ascend, Ascend. I mean, we all can see what's, what benefit that's providing, I don't need to throw numbers out at you, you get it, so.
And I will say, too, if I were to say, yeah, it highlights the disincentive, or just like your property visitor, again, a homeowner is gonna go, man, I made my house nice, right, I gotta pay taxes on it right now. Oh, if I expand my business, and I get TIF, like, twenty-five years, I get to fund it with my, with my own money, it works so great, so. It's just, TIF is hard, I wish we didn't have to do it, but I understand.
You don't have to do it. You don't, you don't have to do it.
Well.
I mean, we can say no.
Right. Or keep for the shorter duration of each, I think, right? I just wanna make sure we maximize everything, second. If we are confident that we are maximizing, we should be getting, um, uh, we're not so.
And I know, I know people wanna gravitate to, this is just a handle, uh, but I'm in those meetings. I mean, and I, I'm trying to get every possible benefit for the city as we can get. And it's not always a less, uh, difficult, it might be getting them to pay for stuff that we're gonna have to pay for out of the general levy anyway. So let's get them to, to foot the bill instead of us, as part of this.
I'm not against it. Wish we didn't have to, but we do, so.
So, this, I wanted to show you, you know, yeah, everyone's looking at the increase this year, and there's explanation why that is. But I want you to see, in comparison to other outstate cities, I mean, we are well below what everybody else is doing. And I think, and I would argue that our results are better than most, all of these cities for economic development and housing. We're doing that at a very cost-effective way, uh, not even doing half of the levy amount that we could possibly do.
And I will give credos to you for that, because money doesn't do it. You need the right people doing the right things, and you were doing that, and I appreciate that, and I think we all recognize that. So, money doesn't do it, you know, we have, we maxed it up, and maybe wouldn't have, but it's not the money that does it.
It's easy for a council to just throw money at.
Yeah.
And then when people say, we need more, hey, we're doing, we're putting as much money into it as we possibly can. I mean, that's a good answer, they can get, right? Because you could have somebody say, hey, we're not doing enough for housing, and they could point to, you're not even putting in fifty percent of what you could be for HRA. You could be doing more. They don't have a Troy.
I will always argue money doesn't fix problems, that's for sure.
I, I had one last comment on this, and then we'll move into, uh, HRA. The one thing with the reporting, I think there's a side positive to that, because Alers is doing it right. We know it's gonna get done properly, that's no statement about previous, because hopefully it's always been done properly. But with that all working into our big picture financial plan, that, we, we will eventually have a full view.
We have a look.
We're ready to turn around here. And I think that'll be helpful too.
We're looking at it more holistically, rather than just, we gotta, TIF report, we gotta get into the state.
Right.
What's the most easiest way to do it, have staff do it, plug it in? Now we've got a more comprehensive look at everything with elders doing it, so.
And that'll help in the sense too of, even when we're doing budgets, we don't know when they're coming up. When are we gonna get these injections of money? Hopefully, a bunch of them in the next few years, hopefully, Emily. Shake your head, yes, there's some kind of.
Twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty, thirty-one, I think.
Okay. But at least we will have the ability to plan for that, and know where it fits in, and what comes in, and all that, so that'll be helpful too. Uh, any other questions for the EDA? All right. HRA?
All right, HRA, ahead, Hassan's gonna pop in here at six, I told him he didn't have to sit through all this other stuff. So he's gonna come down, and in part, uh, you know, I want you to hear from him, kinda, and some of you have talked to Hassan about, uh, what he does and voucher programs, so that's a lot of both of you, um, so he'll pop in here and, uh, and explain a little bit of what he was doing. So HRA, oh, there's another important stat I wanted to bring up, so I did my research a little bit, because I just wanted to fill you with all this information. So, when I started this position in two thousand and eleven, uh, so we're looking at two, twenty-twenty-six budget now, right? So fifteen years later, when I, when I started this job in twenty-eleven, uh, the amount of our levy for EDA and HRA were both saying one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so fifteen years later, even with these big jumps here, EDA's at two forty, so it doubled. It comes out to, uh, about six point seven percent annual increase, which is below, uh, many years of our levy increase. And the EDA is a six point one percent, uh, annually over that fifteen year period, if you take these, these last numbers here. So again, we had, we had many years of zero, and, you know, uh, someone would argue, well, don't ever leave it at zero, because then you, the, when you have to fund it the way you should, you can see big jumps, which is exactly what's happening this year. But I always apply that, we don't ask for more than what we need for that given year. So, uh, when we asked you for forty thousand dollars more EDA, we actually did need forty thousand dollars more EDA. This is the year, we have to make a jump, um, and so that's why it's there. But across the fifteen year period, we're talking at less than seven percent for both of those. All right, HRA, uh, so, there are two basic things we do in HRA. One is our voucher program. And, you know, I hope some people don't like the voucher program, why are we subsidizing, uh, housing, um, you know, for people who gotta pay their own way? The reality is, is, uh, about seventy percent of our vouchers have some sort of disability, uh, whether it's physical or mental disability, so.
Seventy?
Yes. And, and so, if we don't have that program, I mean, you will, the community would notice the difference if we did not. Boland Smith's is, it'd become an even bigger problem than it already is. We are fortunate enough that we haven't seen it to the levels many other cities have. And so, and it takes a village really to take care of those sort of issues. And so we have a very good, uh, support system within the community, uh, and we partner with them, um, on a lot of the stuff. Our, our role as the HRA is the voucher program. So, we don't do, we don't provide, you know, uh, a home or shelter, we've got other groups doing that, transitional housing, they're doing their thing. Everyone's kinda got a piece of this, of the whole puzzle, our role is the voucher program. So we have about a hundred and eighty, uh, vouchers, um, that we fund, and, um, Hassan talked about that a little bit here, but, um, so that's a big piece of it. That is, that portion of it, well, about a hundred and twenty to twenty-five of the hundred and eighty vouchers we have are fellow funds. And, uh, we just have a big discussion today about, uh, the shutdown, and what's that's all gonna mean here. So, uh, we are getting information, I mean, by the hour almost, uh, today, on what that all means. And, um, what we can tell at this point is, you know, we have, we have some funds already, and it sounds like they are gonna commit to funding, uh, October and November, uh, payments, and we have funds available probably for another month. So we, we feel, uh, pretty good about the November payments and probably December payments. Uh, but if it, if it continues on, and we won't be the only city, uh, this, this is something that'll have to be addressed. Once we get, if it goes on into, uh, January here, uh, or December for January payments, there's gonna have to be discussion, discussion, some decision. I don't know, you know, what they're gonna do, or what they're not gonna do for that, so, we're not alone on this one. So, but, I, you know, I think we're in a good enough spot that we can be able, we've made October payments, we can, uh, safely say November, probably December payments, we can.
Considering that we're talking about some of our most vulnerable citizens, do we have some monies that push them come to shut in mid-November or December, and we still shut down, that we, that's the way to fall back on, take care of this?
So, uh, another point, I think we, uh, got some confirmation today was, typically in the past, when there has been a shutdown, once they get back up and going, they, they go back and reimburse the cities for any out-of-pocket expenses they may have incurred to keep the program going. Now, that's the past, this administration might handle things differently, but in past practice, that hasn't been the case. So, I think our goal would be to not, uh, use any of our own funds for that, uh, at this point. Because again, I think we've got HUD funds available that we currently have, and what we will be receiving in the next few months to last is probably, uh, through December. But come December time, I mean, either the shutdown hopefully is ended, and we're back to normal, or there's been some discussion at federal level of how to deal with all of these vouchers that are nationwide and that are out there. And, so we're, there's probably not much of a local role to take here, unless the federal government says, we're not paying for it, everybody's on their own. Then we have probably also discussion, hopefully.
I think you did a nice job summarizing it, Troy, and as Troy said, it's pretty fluid, and I mean, this is what we know today. He's learning about it hour by hour, some, uh, updates or how other communities are doing it. So, we'll keep you updated on where we are, but the directors are all working with Troy, uh, trying to support and to, uh, manage that, um, that situation. But, uh, it's what we know at this moment in time.
Um, and since we're on that topic, maybe I'll have Hassan come up and just, uh, talk a little bit about our voucher programs. What are some of the, uh, duties that you have to do in administering those? So you can see on a day-to-day level, sort of what our staff, uh, does for the voucher program. I think you all need to sit. Yeah, why don't you just sit up there?
Hello, everyone. All right, Hassan Madcor, Housing Redevelopment Authority Housing Manager. So, basically, I'll, I'll start with this. When we do the orientations, which everybody has to go through an orientation as to what we do and so forth, the first thing I tell our clients is, one of the first things I should say is, we have a responsibility and a, a relationship between three people, myself, the client, and the landlord. So one of my duties in saying that is letting them know is, we need to protect our landlords also. So as Troy was mentioning earlier about the funding, what's happening with HUD, um, the landlords are just as affected by this as, um, as the tenants, if not more, because the tenant's responsibilities really don't pay their portion during this, this drama that's going on right now. So that hurts the landlord. That said, the other thing I also tell landlords is, uh, the tenants in the orientation test is, uh, I'm here to protect them and keep the voucher. So, um, like, you, you, you asked earlier with the folks that have a disability of some kind, what could happen, what? So, it is a big concern. Uh, Troy had mentioned the support system you have here in town is phenomenal with regards to, uh, caseworkers that really, really work hard for the clients. And they have a great communication with me for the guards, keeping me in the middle of things also. So, uh, I'm not sure if all, because there's a great amount of people that are in that position, you know, in that disability position, can be serviced as well as others, I don't know, but some can, I know with those that do have the caseworkers, um, are in pretty good shape and in a good position. So that's just an aside, as far as the start of what I let people know, I want people to know that we care. One of the last things I wanna do is, uh, if they're doing something that's so dramatic and so bad and not out of control when it comes to legal issues and legal matters, and, and precedents that are set by HUD and by the state of Minnesota, then I have to step in and say, okay, sorry, you had your chance. But it really, we really stretch it out and make sure they keep a voucher, because it's very important for them to have. So, we have a few different programs. We have programs that are some, that are funded by HUD, straight from, from Washington. One of those is called the Housing Choice Voucher, HCV, which used to be called the Section Eight Program. As of six, eight years ago, the Section Eight label went away, and HCV became a new label, Housing Choice Voucher. Uh, that is the traditional we offer over the years. Secondly, we have what's called the Main Street Voucher. The Main Street Voucher operates the same way as the Housing Choice Voucher, except to qualify for it is a little bit different. The qualification for the Main Street vouchers, people have to be between eighteen and sixty-one years old with a disability. So it's a specific group of people, it's a, it's a specific demographic that we have to cater to under that program. The disability can be somebody in the household, doesn't have to be the head household, it could be someone in the household, a child, and so forth. But somebody has to be, and it has to be on paper, everything has to be regimented and so forth, so we can, anybody can look at the file and see, oh, that's what's saving place in HUD or make them in, or, or auditors look at things, so you can look for these kinds of, this kind of paperwork in the file. Uh, so the third program that we have going on right now with HUD, it's been on, we're, we're gonna reignite it a little bit, but, uh, hopefully a lot of it, but, it's a HUD, it's, as part of the HUD Housing Choice Voucher Program and Main Street, there's the Home Ownership Program. as part of the HUD Housing Choice Voucher Program and Main Street, there's the homeownership program. There's, uh, we do have a couple of clients that are on that program, one who lives in Allendale and the other in Woodland Prairie. And it basically works through the USDA where, uh, they, they get a lower rate, they have to of course qualify. Uh, the qualification process for these folks is not, um, so demanding as far as credit. And there, there's a lot of leniency when it comes to getting them to the, uh, to be able to qualify for the program. But, that's exactly what it is. They pay a portion to, uh, USDA as the landlord, essentially, as the lien holder, and we pay the balance. So, but it's, the mortgages are somewhere between, that I have right now with these two folks, I think are between five fifty and seven hundred dollars. Very affordable, those that are on a fixed income, social security, because many of our clients can afford that typically. So, um, we're looking to keep that off, um, talking to Troy, probably within the next month or two at the latest. So, we'll send out letters to everybody that's on the HUD program, on the federal program. And, um, they can certainly apply for that. Where we work, uh, up in partnership with Three Rivers on this deal, get this stuff from these folks. Whoever qualifies, we'll see, but that's great. I mean, the best thing is to have your own house. That's the other thing I do bring up, a lot of these folks don't have the vision of owning their own place. A lot of these folks, I mean, honestly, a lot of these folks, they come to the meeting and they, they can't sit for an hour and a half meeting. It's just not their persona. So, a lot of their, their mindset is not ownership, uh, getting a job full-time, you know, doing what we've been blessed to do. Uh, however, I try and plant those seeds. I let them know, I say, there, there's an avenue for you. If you're able to discipline yourself and save the money and so forth, you can get your own place. You can own that. That happened to one of my clients in twelve years after this. He actually bought the house he was living in, and that was his goal the whole time, back in Rochester. It's phenomenal. So, those are the three programs, the homeownership program, mainstream program, the HCV program, Housing Choice Voucher for HUD. The other two programs we currently have right now are through, one of them is through the state of Minnesota, it's the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, and that is, uh, it's called Bridges. That is specifically for folks that are homeless or coming out of an institution slash facility, okay, to qualify for that. We are funded, and it is a grant, there's a two-year grant that starts in June. This is actually, the new grant started this June, uh, July, check that, July of twenty-five, and it goes to June thirtieth of twenty-seven, okay? So, there's, it's a set limit of money. So, I can't add more than what's, what's out there already. Then there's another program that's called Bridges Like. That money is from Spiro Combination Minnesota Prairie. And that's right now, it's, they actually started this issue, it's been every year fifty-five thousand. They bumped us up to add extra money to sixty-five thousand. So, we have ten clients on that program. That one is specifically for, um, the severe mentally ill people. So, there, there's a certain qualification has to be part of that grant, because it comes from these folks for, from, from Woodland Prairie and Spiro for that purpose. So, those five programs we're operating right now. We are working, um, on a program that we hope will kick in, if not January first, but, uh, sooner than that, and that is called, it's called the Bring It Home Program. Uh, we've been allotted five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for that for a two-year grant, starting whenever we started, whether it's before January or on January, but it's for two years thereafter. That one's specifically designed with the priority of having people, families, with kids that are under eighteen. If we don't have that, um, and that's a priority, we can, we can set other priorities before, after that. But if that's, that is the main one. Those are our main folks that we want to, uh, take care of, okay? But we can set priorities after that if there's no more families to take care of and we still have the fundings and the vouchers to do so, okay? Any questions about any of the programs at all? No? All right. We're excited about the Bring It Home, referring to the issue, because it's, it's, again, it's a different demographic that we're dealing with. And, um, we're looking forward to doing that. I appreciate you guys allowing me to have a, a, a part-time person, because we can spread our wings a little more now, or a lot more actually. And she's getting to learn everything and then, uh, her patience is virtuous, obviously, but she's coming from a whole new avenue. One thing, and that is social work. She did that, she did deal with work, so for three years, and that's how I knew her. She was a caseworker with some of my clients. That said, she's learning a whole new avenue right now. It's, this isn't what she's done, but she has a very big passion for people and moreover for housing. So, because that was, that was actually a division she worked for at Spiro, was the housing something that they called out there. That was her, one of her priorities over there as a, as a employee. Any questions on, nothing on those, okay? Um, now, how do we operate? I, in simplest fashion, the client will pay thirty percent of their income, out of the rent of their income. So, if the rent is a thousand dollars, thirty percent of the rent, it'd be three hundred. But if thirty percent of their income is only a hundred and fifty, that's what they pay. We pay the difference of a hundred and fifty. That make sense? But it's a big difference, and the, the clients during orientation kind of look at me funny every time I say that, some of them, because they're, they're thinking rent. They see the, you know, I, I call it the advertised rent. So, um, thirty percent of their income is what they pay on average, is utilities involved with that. We do a utility allowance on our HUD program, so, uh, we don't pay for their utilities. We have a utility schedule that we have to have every year. We have a company, a third-party company that takes care of that for us and does all the research. Um, and it's a schedule that everybody has to use when they're moving in, or when they're moving to a new unit, so. And basically, if the utility schedule says what they're responsible for, let's say, is a hundred dollars, they will have a hundred dollars off the top of the thirty percent. Check that, my bad, off the top of forty percent. Let me go back one step. HUD says forty percent of your income is reasonable for rent plus utilities. And what they're going to end up paying is around that thirty percent. So, that hundred dollar, if it's a utility allowance for that, comes off the forty percent, and then they will pay that difference. So, it gives them, takes that, uh, burden of utilities a little bit away from that. So, that's how all our programs function. Thirty percent is the aver, is, is about the where they're going to land of their income, where they'll pay for their portion of rent. Um, and then we pay the balance. Now, obviously, if it's their income, it's going to vary. Their income goes up, so there's their portion. Their income goes down, so there's their portion. And same thing with our portion. If their income goes up, our portion goes down. So, um, and, and there's, uh, other things, I don't know how far you want me in getting depth with numbers and so forth, but, um, any questions on that? That's pretty simple? Okay. Um, the other thing we do is, we do, we go off and do inspections. We have to do inspections annually for the Bridges Program that is required by Minnesota Housing. Uh, we do it bi-annually, not, uh, every two years, um, uh, for the HUD program. Now, we do have a choice in the HUD program. They say you can go out there once a year, you can go out there once every two years. There's no, uh, discrimination if we choose to do some folks want every year and others every two years. They say if somebody is not keeping their unit, then you might want to go out there every year and keep them accountable somewhat. When I first started, my standards were high from where I came from, um, as far as what to look for. And, and, and a lot of the landlords at first didn't take to me. They really didn't. But they understand now, oh, Hassan is doing a good thing by looking at our unit, there's order, he's going in there now and there's some accountability with these tenants. It's a good thing. Um, and I've built a lot of good relationships with a lot of landlords, which is, which is, which helps a lot. Oftentimes, they'll call me when they have units, say, Hassan, you got anybody that needs a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom? Uh, I try not to get too involved with that, because I don't want to do it for some landlords and not for others. Because I don't want to cross the bridge of fair housing and who knows where I can turn to. I try to stay away from that. Um, ultimately, as true to speaking, I, I don't want to put the city in a position where all of a sudden, we're on the map, on the newspaper, you know? And that's, I try and protect that as best I can, because I'm dealing with folks that are caring about themselves. Really. They're coming to me saying, I need help, me, 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 me. So, what, if they're going to, if they get mad about something, they turn on us. It's to protect themselves. Whether the city is going to be affected in a sense, so I've got to do the best I can to make sure the HRA, you know, is not on, on, on the newspaper. Secondly, as far as the vouchers, so sometimes you, you'll, you wonder, how is it one person versus two people versus five people in a household? So, like anything in life, there's a dollar figure set to everything. Vouchers, um, and, and what size voucher is based on the household composition. For example, a one-bedroom voucher is, uh, in, in our, in Steel County, at this point, it's called, payment standard is called nine hundred and forty, it's, well, you have, it's nine hundred and forty dollars. What does that stand for? We've all heard of fair market rents. HUD comes out with them every September to October for every county in America. We are allowed to go between ninety to a hundred and ten percent on, uh, more. So, what they gave us for a one-bedroom voucher in this case, uh, we went a hundred and ten percent, which means nine hundred and forty dollars. What that means is, that's the most we will pay for that unit. For example, somebody who doesn't have an income, they are going to automatically qualify. However, we'll probably pay them all the rent. Does that make sense? Because they have zero income, okay? At nine hundred and forty dollars with the, with that payment standard, if the rent is, let's say, nine-ten, the advertised rent, they would have to pay that ten dollars, I will pick up the nine forty. So, they have to find ten bucks somewhere. But this is the top that we'll pay. There's a dollar figure for every bedroom size. We're not telling people how to physically live in their units, but there's got to be, there's got to be standards as what, uh, as the maximum we're going to spend, based on what HUD tells us we can spend. And we use the same payment standards for all the programs off the HUD numbers, okay? Now, our rule and our admin plan here at Steel County or Shea Old Town, because we, we do allow for Steel County other folks to find other places. We spread our wings for them whether it, because it's just such a tight market to find places locally. If they can go into other places, uh, we allow that. If that's the case, um, basically, we're looking at, if it's a, for example, if it's a one-bedroom voucher, our rule is basically that you can, it's for two people. Husband, wife, boy or girlfriend, two people, okay? But if it's a mom or a dad only and a child, it becomes a two-bedroom voucher. So, what our, what our language is, um, first bedroom is for head household plus partner. And then every other bedroom is for two people regardless of age, but they are gender-based. Does that make sense? So, if it's mom, dad, boy, girl, that's a three-bedroom voucher. Mom, dad, two boys, two-bedroom voucher, or two girls. Now, every, it, what HUD does, there's certain regulations that HUD will allow you to go ahead and change based on the, uh, the area odds. So, you have that autonomy. One of those is, is, is that regulation I just told you, what we have here, so for Steel County and Old Town. Rochester, for example, on Set County, a HRA, is a little different. Theirs is, the first bedroom is the same for head household and partner, but every other bedroom is for two people regardless of age and gender. So, boy, girl, again, we're not going to tell people how to live, because HUD also says that a living room, as long as there's proper exit, is, is a bedroom, they want to use it as a bedroom. So, that does count as a bedroom, but not numerically, when I was talking about payment standards. Yeah, so that's, that's basically, so every other, so if it's, let's say it's a mom, dad, two boys, two girls, that's a three-bedroom voucher. Mom, dad, uh, two, two boys, two girls, and another boy, that becomes a four-bedroom voucher. So, um, and every family is going to be different. Now, of course, there are some families that have a tight, uh, tight, tight, sorry, tough time finding larger units when they have five to six children in our area. We're very limited on that. However, we do have some landlords that are willing with four-bedroom units that are willing to, um, accommodate those folks. We, the timing has to be right for it. Does that make sense? As far as finding the place for them. I do now, we do not search for places for folks. We just don't have that time. And if we do for one, we really have to do it for all. We just cannot do that. If I see somebody shopping for a unit, then I would, I would gladly call them up, say, hey, just call this landlord, see if they're willing to meet with you and see if there's any feasibility in moving to that unit. The other thing I, uh, I, I see a lot of, we can, we don't, um, deal with, um, as far as money, is a lot of landlords are charging an exorbitant amount of money for obligation fees. And some of these people can't afford, I, I mean, to be honest, they cannot afford a light bulb, let alone forty or fifty dollars for an obligation fee, without any guarantee if they have a little bit of a bear contest landlord or something like. So, I don't know if there's a way we can do that as a HRA, that's just been on my mind, because I hear it over and over and over. I get calls regularly about, you guys take care of obligation fees at all. So, I, I don't know if there's a way, I'm not expecting to be, but it's just something I'll plant a seed out there and maybe in years to come, we can do that, but it gets very, very exorbitant for these people. And they're getting rejected one, two, or three places. Now, you're talking a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars of apiece that just they don't have. And often, some of the, uh, some of the other organizations will help them with that. But, um, that, that's one area that they can't, sometimes can't overcome that to get to there.
So, a lot of these programs will have their own rules. And then, there, there, there's some ability from the local HRA to make up our, our own, make some of our own decisions. You made reference to the admin plan. So, our HRA admin plan, uh, talks about some of these things that we have some, uh, ability to, to make the rules on. So, um, but all of these programs, you know, the, the intent is, uh, to help people move up, um, and be able to, uh, on their own, uh, be self-sufficient, and ultimately, you know, and some of these programs allow them to, you know, be able to buy over there too. So, the turnover, I mean, I, I would say years ago, we had very little turnover. I mean, the turnover we have now, we have people coming off, a lot of people just don't qualify anymore because they're making behind of income now, they, I mean, which is exactly what we want to see happen. It's a short-term thing that someone needs to help better themselves, uh, and then they move on to do a very better thing. So, a lot of them are disabled and probably, uh, many of those will be on it for a long time. But, it's never intended to be, okay, you're, you've got it, the rest of your life you'll be doing something. So, um, there's always, uh, I mean, we're seeing so many people now, uh, graduate off of that. So, um, trying to address the stereotypes that a lot, that I hear a lot out there, uh, on that. And so, you know, I think we're, um, we've got a lot of new programs. I think we'll, uh, help people, uh, move up in positions there again. And like I said, I think we would notice in the period of, if, if, if. Does anyone have any specific questions or any other, uh?
Is there a minimum age, for instance, for, for the homelessness, high school, for instance? If you have to be eighteen and have a household to?
Uh, you have to be eighteen, uh, to actually be the head household to start, to apply for a voucher. Now, um, there is a waitlist process. Everybody goes through, they have, there's a waitlist and there's, uh, pecking order essentially per HUD. So, uh, and we give a waitlist out, just the last three, last, yesterday, from yesterday to today, I think it was in five. It's not uncommon. They have them online, they can get them online, they can come in and get them, I can email them to folks. So, um, yeah, so there is that waitlist process, but eighteen is the minimum. I will say this also, um, Troy doesn't know this, but I received an email today from HUD after you and I spoke, uh, because you, you touched base on it a little bit, uh, when we were just explaining a little further. And that is HUD is right now has, has two things on the table for these folks that are on a program. One of them, uh, it's, they're not, they haven't come to fruition yet, but they're on the table for processing and dealing with it as time goes on and possibly applying it. And one of them is, uh, those that can work are eventually going to have to work. So, uh, and except for those that are disabled or elderly, uh, that need the program and cannot work physically, then tho, there are those folks are excluded from this possible, uh, change in pace here. work physically, then those folks are excluded from this possible change in pace here. But the, I mean, I have people on paying, I have one lady just today, her income went down because her daughter was over eighteen, no, her daughter's seventeen, but her income was social security. That income counts for everybody no matter the age, HUD wants that recorded, but because her daughter at seventeen years old left, that income's gone, so she went from, I think, thirteen hundred dollars a month that we're paying, to almost, just around seventeen hundred dollars a month. So additional four hundred times twelve months is a big dose. But, but she can be working. And we, you know, she says, she says to me, I'll work, I'll work, but, so that's one thing's work. And the second thing that's on the table is, they're going to possibly put on a, those that can work, a two-year maximum on their voucher, and then they have to come off. So that just, just got the email for the last hour and a half.
So, you know, we'll probably see some changes like this to the program, and, you know, we'll apply them as they come through, and I think for the most part, you know, most people are doing what they should be doing, so.
Absolutely, yeah. You can have some of those folks, absolutely, but yeah.
Most people really appreciate it. There, there's examples across the board.
Yes.
Situation.
Everything, yeah.
All right, are we good?
Yeah. Anybody have any other questions we get?
You don't have any more topics with Troy to hit tonight?
No.
Well, I'll just, I'll just bring up, the other, the other part of HRA is projects, so it's not all vouchers, the other thing is, is projects, which we, in our ADA, our HRA budget, have some money set aside for, we call it land projects. And it's between, you know, thirty-five to fifty thousand a year, and it's not enough in an individual year to use those dollars for any particular project, but you need like three, four, or five years of that to be able to do a particular project. So we have, over time, accumulated some dollars, and right now, we're focused on the Partridge Avenue property to try to get some affordable housing down there. We're accessing other funding sources from the county and United Way, but that's an example of, you know, other things the HRA is focused on, actually creating new affordable housing options. So like these gate two, if you get the tax credits, it requires city participation. So we've, we've obligated some, well, TIF on that one, and some housing dollars into that, you know, in order to get tax credits awarded, so that we can get that project approved and get that project done. So there are those sort of projects that the HRA is involved in trying to create new affordable. So those are probably the two things. I mean, there's many HRAs that do a ton of things, that are huge organizations, we're basically a one and a half-person operation, I got maybe a quarter of my time to do it, so not even two full-time people working on, you know, the voucher program and creating affordable housing, so that is kind of our niche. It's, it's, we don't maximize our HRA levy that we could, like many other cities do. We know what we do, we do it very well, and we ask for the dollars that are needed to do those things. So in this case, our HRA levy, we're asking for fifteen thousand dollars more, which is, you know, about a seven percent increase over last year, and again, that is just to fund those, those operations that are two priorities. So we're not looking to solve every housing issue out there, we're looking to focus on our, our couple of things here to help the affordable housing issue.
Everybody good? All right. We do have Judy Johns in the room, so if you want some heat, we can go in there, and then we will be back for a seven o'clock meeting.